Wow, that would be a problem.
Hey, how are you?
You may have to hold.
Stephanie, I think it's you, Beth Collins and Ann Campbell at the moment. It's yours, Elizabeth. I think it's yours making the feedback. Shut my door. I don't know why it says Ann Campbell. There we go.
This isn't it, is it? Yeah, that's not gonna be here.
Well, it's only a finance meeting, so what do they want to be?
Right, only three. You guys tell me if you want a different meeting.
If no one's offended, I'm gonna treat my mask off.
Bill, you're, I barely see ya.
You're way over there.
You're, you're. I rarely get the sound of the driver.
This is the big old call of us.
This is it.
Yeah, I'm out. And I'm going to retire the committee next week.
For what?
Leisure World, California.
Oh, oh, you're watching, ma?
Hopefully. The doctor will tell me tomorrow. Is that recording?
Not you, are it?
Yeah, oh, that's great. So, thank you, Chris. Yeah, me too. Although it came really for, not, not for emergencies.
What's that?
Not health emergency. Do you want some cheaters? I got some cheaters. We can make a really blown on the platter, but I figured that was, we're saving money on ink and paper.
Yeah, so cheaters, that's all I wear is cheaters.
Oh, is that right?
Just to read here.
The more you rely on them, the more you rely on them. These might be 2.0. I think they're McCarthy's.
Well, these are great, thank you very much, perfect. And you look good on you, too. I'm ready whenever you are, I see. That's great, alright, well, I'll call the order then. Everything's up and running?
Yep. Can everyone hear us? In the, anyone hear your microphone?
Yeah. You can hear.
Okay, trustee Henning.
I'm here.
Trustee Fritz is absent, trustee Campbell here. Okay, we have a quorum for the committee.
Can you list everyone else as?
Yeah, in addition, we have trustee Cook, trustee Thomas, and trustee Brand.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, we don't have any, we don't need to do remote participation, we're all here. Public comment?
Does anybody want to speak?
Excellent, I'm hearing, so we're gonna move on. Brings us to new unfinished business. Execution of financial strategy to pay off the Peach and loan agreement, I assume I'm going to put Andy with that.
That is correct, Andy, you're gonna make a presentation? Really loud.
Everybody, can you guys hear me okay?
You're excellent.
I'm gonna actually turn you down a bit. If I can.
Want me to talk louder?
No. We don't have to do the outside voice.
Um, so what we have tonight for your consideration is the ordinance which is gonna allow for the issuance of the 2.4 million dollars of debt certificates, which aligns with the strategy we talked about to retire the Peach and loan last June that you gave, or last month that you gave direction on. Um, I'm gonna have Kyle give a summary of it a little bit, but just, you know, a couple of quick notes. A- as you saw in the summary, there is a estimated $36,000, that's the one-time issuance cost. It represents 1.5% of the par amount of the bonds. Um, and that compares very favorably to a comparative analysis that Jamie and I, Jamie did most of the legwork on it. Where we looked at other Illinois issuances under $3 million. Um, and those average issuance costs were 45,000 or 1.8% of the bonds. So again, it's, it's a very conservative and financially conservative position to be in. There's gonna be a resolution then where we're recommending to retain Kyle Harding of Chapman Cutler to be the bond counsel on the issuance. Chapman Cutler is the, one of the, probably the leading bond counsel in the state of Illinois. Um, I know in 2019, they did seven times the number of transaction, bond transactions than the closest competitor. Um, obviously, you know, getting things right for the issuances from a legal, financial perspective is very important. Um, there's ramifications if anything's not right. But not only in the issuance side, there's a lot of issues with post-compliance, too. Um, things that we have to report on for SEC IRS requirements. And, you know, Chapman was bond counsel on the '07 issuance and the '14 refunding. So they've been key to helping us make sure we remain in post, uh, post-issuance compliance with a lot of complex laws. Um, and they've done that all, um, basically without, you know, billable hours, so they, they make their money on the transaction. Um, and I don't think they've billed us outside of the two transactions, and I'm sure they have tens of hours into helping us through lots of different things. One of the other things I talked about they did is they helped, um, with the legislative change that allowed the district to segregate our debt. Um, and actually, and that's what Elizabeth led, I think, back through 13 and 14. Um, and actually, it's the success of that legislative change that's allowing us to issue these debt certificates today. Without that, we wouldn't have been able to do it. Um, and then the other resolution will be to, if I can find it here, to basically retain Jamie Racklin, who's the president of Maristem Advisors, he's 25 years in public finance. He's the managing director, he was the managing director for BMO Capital Markets, and they served as the underwriter um, for the district's 2014 refunding. And again, I've said this a couple of times, but if you haven't heard it, just because it's a pretty meaningful thing. He's largely responsible for that full savings that we realized on the '14 refinancing. So for several years leading up to that, numerous underwriters, numerous financial advisors would come into the office or cold call and make various sort of sales pitches saying, "Look, you have $2 million of savings right now today, you need to lock those in for the taxpayers. If you don't and rates go up, you know, you haven't done your job. And is that where you wanna be?" And it was through me reaching out for a relationship I had with Jamie, um, you know, many times over two or three years, where he, you know, he basically guided us to say, "Hey, you gotta look at the upside versus the downside, there's a tremendous upside, very little downside." Um, and then, basically, when, when, you know, that kind of, uh, became where that downside started to look like it could grow, that's when Jamie, you know, said, "Hey, now's the time, let's pull the trigger." Um, and again, we realized 4.14.2 million dollars in savings from that. Um, he's given lots of pro bono hours, too, as well over the years, helping me look at different things. I think we probably paid maybe four or five billable hours over the last three years, and he's, I'm sure he's got 30 hours into the district. Um, with that, I'm just gonna turn it over to Jamie real quick and see if there's anything he'd like to say to add about himself or the firm.
Sure, uh, just, hi, everybody, it's, it's a real pleasure to be working with the district. I think I've met many of you at this point, and, uh, Andy filled in the details for, for those that don't know me yet. But, uh, I'd, I'd add, it's, it's a real pleasure for me to be working with the district because I've always had a strong interest in conservation uh, issues, and I'm active on the board of open lands as well, so this is actually a thrill for me to be involved, uh, with the district on top of just it being part of my business. Um, just a quick, I think Andy wanted me to give a, a quick overview of what's going on in the interest rate, uh, market. Uh, we've seen, you know, we came through a period of a lot of volatility in, uh, March and April. Since then, things really settled down, and they're almost just been steady as a rock for the last month, you know? Who knows, uh, what the future holds and whether that, that changes, but for now, things are quite stable. The core interest rates, uh, are very low, the risk-free interest rates, super low. What's changed a little from pre-virus days is the credit spreads, what you pay for not being a perfect credit. So, on balance, those things, uh, offset a little bit, and we're in a great environment that's very favorable, uh, for the borrowers notwithstanding. So, my expectation is we should be able to get this done under 2%, uh, hopefully by a fair margin, though I don't wanna stick my neck out too far. Uh, particularly if we can get the resolution passed and get this, I, I, get someone to sign on to, uh, an interest rate at current, current levels pretty quickly. The longer we wait, I think, the more risk we run of, of what's, uh, we don't control in the interest rate market. So, um, we've actually taken some preliminary steps to make sure that we're ready, uh, once you pass the resolution, uh, to move forward quickly. Anything else that you wanted me to add, Andy?
No, other than, is the name of the firm Maristem, am I pronouncing that right?
Maristem, and so that's.
Could you tell the board what that means?
Sure, uh, so the Maristem is the part, is the stem tissue in a tree that can propagate into anything, it's like your stem cells, it can propagate into leaves, it can propagate into, uh, roots or branches, and I, I was mentioning before my interest in trees and conservation, so that's where I took the name from. But, um, hopefully that's not a biology lesson for everybody.
It was for me, but I'm sure there's people here aware of that. Uh, thanks, Jamie. With that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick it over to Kyle and let him just kinda give a brief overview of the structure, what the ordinance is in, and then open it up for more questions if there are any.
Okay, uh, thank you, Andy. Am I coming through okay, volume-wise? Alright, so, as Andy, Andy mentioned, I did prepare. I'm hearing myself back. As Andy mentioned, I did prepare the ordinance that's, uh, in front of you. The ordinance authorizes the issuance sale of not to exceed 2.4 million dollars of debt certificates to acquire certain land, namely the Peach and parcel. The ordinance is in what we call parameters format, meaning we don't have final pricing in front of you, or we won't have final pricing in front of you next week. But instead, by adopting the ordinance, the board is authorizing the subsequent sale of the debt certificates, so long as that sale fits within the parameters which are specified in the ordinance. So first, I'll tell you, uh, what a debt certificate is, and then I'll summarize those, um, sale parameters that are set forth in, in the ordinance. Uh, the first thing to note is that a debt certificate is a borrowing alternative which is available to all units of local government in Illinois. So we're not under the Conservation District Act, we're under the Local Government Debt Reform Act. And debt certificates can be issued to purchase real or personal property, and they're repaid, so payable from any and all lawfully available funds. So, unlike your outstanding bonds, there is no separate property tax levy to repay the debt certificate. The district needs to repay the, the debt certificates from otherwise lawfully available funds. Uh, debt certificates must be issued in evidence of a payment obligation under an installment contract. Uh, but importantly, the, the Debt Reform Act, which authorizes debt certificates, goes on to authorize the board to create that contract without the need of a third party. So that contract, the form of which occupies probably about the middle third of that, of the ordinance that's been circulated, has no other legal significance other than allowing the district to issue the debt certificates at closing. At closing, district issues the debt certificates and receives the sale proceeds from the purchaser and deposits those sale proceeds into the acquisition fund, which was established by the ordinance. Turning then to the, uh, the sale parameters that are set forth in the ordinance. As I mentioned, we don't have, we, we not expected to have final pricing in front of you next week, so we're looking for adoption of a parameters ordinance. Uh, by adopting this ordinance, the board is authorizing the, the two designated representatives, being the president and the executive director, to sign off on final pricing, but again, only if that final pricing fits within the parameters set forth in the ordinance, which include, again, a par amount not to exceed 2.4 million, and all-in interest cost that does not exceed 2.5% and a final maturity that does not exceed December 31st, 2026. Also, I wanted to highlight that the, the authority for the district to sell the debt certificates uh, following adoption of the parameters ordinance will expire after six months, so if the transaction isn't, has not been completed, uh, at that time, we'd have to come back to the board. And with, with that, I'd certainly, uh, happy to, uh, answer any questions.
I have a question. Are we, we are issuing five 12-month term debt certificates as opposed to one five-year term debt certificate, and there must be a reason for that. Am I misunderstanding?
Can you, I, you just didn't come through quite clearly enough, so I'd have to guess at the, guess at the question, could you just repeat it one more time, please?
My understanding is that we are issuing five one-year serial debt certificates as opposed to one five-year debt certificate. And I'm just curious as to why and how the interest rate for the annual certificates beyond the first year is going to be determined? Is it gonna be the same interest rate, or is it gonna be a floating rate, or is it whatever you've written down?
Well, so, so the intention, uh, to, to answer the second question first, the intention is that these interest rates will be fixed. And, uh, so they'll be set once, once we get the bid from the purchaser, uh, at whatever it is, they will not change, doesn't matter what happens to the interest rates, uh, after that. As to your first question, uh, you've actually hit, hit on some of the complication of the issue, uh, which, in, in the draft of the resolution, we've allowed for serial maturities. Typically speaking, although this gets in, into added layers of complexity, but I'll try and keep it, you know, short. Uh, when you allow serial maturities, it allows an investor to give you a one-year rate and a two-year rate and a three-year rate and so on out to maturity, and typically, what you'll see is that a shorter rate is a lower interest rate. And so by doing that, uh, you allow yourself to capture those shorter-term interest rates as you go along out, out the scale. Now, in this case, uh, what we anticipate is really no maturities at all until, uh, final maturity. So in this case, what we're really anticipating is that we have one rate, and it's the long rate, and if we did have any amortization coming before 2026, it would be a very small amount. Uh, now, as a practical matter, if you didn't care one way or another, we could make a change to the ordinance very easily that allowed for more flexibility by having one single maturity at one single interest rate and give us a little more flexibility on some of the maturities, but those are all nuances and pros and cons. And, um, uh, they're just levels of, degrees of, of flexibility. But hopefully, I didn't complicate my answer too much, and you got the core of what you were looking for there.
Thank you, and I don't have any predetermined, uh, you know, plan in mind, I just was curious, and so I think you addressed.
Anyone else? Questions? I think you guys did a great job, yeah, thank you. Very good.
Thank you.
And I agree.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, great.
Signing off.
Is that consent agenda for council, they wanted it on the regular for the ordinance?
I missed that first one, what'd you say?
The ordinance for the debt issuance cannot be done on a consent agenda, it needs to be taken outside of that, so it is why it's been placed.
We're good. Hey, anybody have anything else on that subject? Not, we'll move on to 4.2, which is, uh, 20-point property tax study and development of 2022 budget discussion.
This is going back over to Andy as he gets his screen ready, uh, for a PowerPoint. Um, we also, here at your tables, we did print out a copy, so you have that, it's also out in your Dropbox. And, um, tonight, we're gonna go through, um, just overall, what we hope to get from this evening is an introduction, basically looking at three scenarios that we've provided to you and the assumptions that we're making. And, um, and again, we'll have a, several times to go into the details, Andy's gonna present the numbers, the financial forecast, and then I will go ahead and present what's he's done, some of the general assumptions or impacts to some of the decisions.
I can't share a screen right now, I was.
You can't. Stephanie, can you allow Andy to share a screen?
Oh, I got it, oh, just a little. There we go.
Are you, are you able to share now?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Gotta make sure I got the right one. That one's good. Perfect. Alright, I think we're ready. Um, so again, the objectives Elizabeth touched on, but to get a consensus for developing the 22 levy, um, really, we're talking about the general fund levies, which include the corporate and social security. The insurance is also part of the PTEL, those three together make up the, the three levies that are subject to PTEL. But the insurance is pretty fixed, you know, 97% of the cost is a BDRMA premium, so there's not much to discuss there. Um, and then understand the financial impacts of the different levy options. We'd also like to hopefully set some basic budget development guidelines, um, understand the 22 budget challenges, uh, and determine potential use of reserves, if we're gonna need to use them, which it looks like we will. And then lastly, as Elizabeth mentioned, she'll talk about the general operational goals then, based on those other three directions. For the assumptions, the expansions and revenues are based on the 21 budget. Um, they're constant, the, the assumptions are constant for all three scenarios. Property tax levy is the only changing variable, the 2020 property tax levy, everything else is constant. Um, and that's the fiscal year 22 revenue, fiscal year 22 budget. And then, we are showing, you know, the 23 and 24 fiscal years, and those are assumed a full levy in '21 and '22. Again, the focus here is on the 22 fiscal year and the 20 levy, we're just, you know, growing that out by two years just to look at it. So as we look at the revenues, a graph, hopefully, we're all really familiar with now, the pie chart showing 80% of the revenues in the general fund come from property taxes, and then 13% from the farm leases, so it's 93% in total. Um, again, another graph that we're familiar with, this shows the general fund property tax levies from 2008 through 2019. The years that are in green are the three years that the, uh, district has raised its general fund levy. Um, and we say effectively since 2011, we've only raised it twice, because when we increased it here in '18, as everybody knows, we reduced it back down in '19 to nullify that. So really, effectively, from 2011, there's only been two increase, and again, they were offset by the debt service reduction, the, the reductions in the debt service levy due to that '14 refunding. So even though the general fund went up in these two years, the total property tax levy of the district went down. Um, this is a new graph we haven't seen before, on the bottom line, it shows the, uh, district's general fund corporate levy. So this should be green, hopefully, to everybody. And you can see it's a pretty flat line, and what it is, it's the annual rate of increase kinda compounding, so if you look at the difference, say, from 2013 at 20.3 to 2014, it means we grew the corporate levy in that year by 1.9%. If that makes sense, so I'm just adding the annual growth onto each year. Um, the one above it by comparison shows what the county's done with their general fund corporate levy going back to the same time. And you can see they've had, you know, really, uh, strong accelerated increases until 2016, um, and then they had the big 10% reductions and still worked to reduce it. To be fair in this comparison, in some of these years, especially in these recent ones, the county was able to show a neutral overall property tax levy because they have at least 10 different levies. So because they had some excess levy capacity, whether it was the Valley High Nursing Home, um, you know, whether it was, uh, social security levy, RMRF levy, whatever, they were able to take that extra capacity and put it into the general fund and then show, you know, a neutral or very minimal levy increase. But nonetheless, you know, their general fund is, you know, just like us, it's a very big part of their operations, it's about half of their total budget. Of course, at the district, it's, you know, it's our whole budget, I mean, it's everything we do is that general fund, basically. Um, over that same time period from 2011 to 19, our average annual general fund levy only increased by one-half of a percent, about 5 tenths of a percent. At the same time, inflation grew on average 1.6%. Um, and then again, just for a full disclosure here, um, up until 2013, all we had was the corporate levy in the general fund, and then in '14, we were allowed to take a separate social security levy. So now I'm showing those two combined here, otherwise, this would go way down, because that social security portion would shift into a different levy. So looking at the tax levy, uh, this shows what we did last year, we started with that '18 levy, we reduced it by $123,000, and then this was the total '19 extension, $7,872,000. Um, so going forward for this 20 levy, um, one option is we start with that '19 amount, that reduced amount of $7,875. We can grow it by the inflation from the calendar year 2019, which was 2.3%. That would be $181,000, our estimate of new development money is only $22,000. Um, that total levy then for '20 would be $8,78,000, an increase of $203,000 or 2.6% over the '19 levy. Um, and that would be the scenario one that we're talking about, and we'll get to those a little bit later on. Um, and then it comes out to an estimated $1.37 increase on a $200,000 home. The other thing, um, option that the district has would be not to start with the '19 levy, but to go back to the '18 before the reduction, which is $7,995,000, grow it by the 2.3%, add the same amount of new development. We've come up with a total 18, I'm sorry, a total 2020 levy of 8.2 million. And that's an increase over the '19 levy of 3.26 or 4.1% average increase to $200,000 on our home would be 2.20. The difference between those two is an additional $123,000, if we were to use the scenario two versus one. Continuing with the assumptions on revenues then, what we're projecting now for the fiscal year '22 budget is a decrease of $46,000 from '21 or about 29%. Again, it actually represents a 34% reduction from what we had actually received in fiscal year '20. So, you know, we don't know where this is going to be, but basically this 160, if you go back and look at '20, it's an actual bigger reduction. But nonetheless, 2020, we had $223,000 of interest income. So if we had that 20, you'd see it. So it's a, you know, it's a pretty big cut from that. Again, we're showing my estimate for '22 is that rates, basically, the overnight rates basically stays at a quarter of a percent. Right now, it's quite a bit above that. It's about 30 to 32 basis points, so it's a little higher than that. I'm showing it staying that through '22 and then moving up slowly in the next couple of years. The other big piece there is you have the $1.5 million coming out of the general fund to make the PTEL pay down. Personal property replacement taxes, I'm showing going down $37,000 from the budget, but this budget was low. The actual amount for 2020 was over $200,000. So this is probably, is going to be, well, it's actually probably going to come out now, I think, because it's a little bit in arrears. But anyway, 20% reduction, I think that's pretty reasonable. On the hunting and camping, we're holding those flat. Again, we, you know, we don't expect any real impact from this pandemic to the hunting. We'll start seeing that here in a couple of months. And on the camping and shelters, we're having a lot of luck with the, you know, restrictions that we've done, and we're hoping that, you know, by the summer season of 2021, we'll be able to hold that constant. But again, we'll see how that plays out. On the education side, they're reducing the revenues by 31%. Again, it's, you know, very difficult for them to kind of plan and anticipate, but they're having some success here already. So hopefully that continues and we can realize that. Questions, comments about that? On the farm lease revenue, we're showing that as a decrease of $103,000 from the fiscal year '21 budget. This shows we budgeted $4 core and the actual lock-in for December '20 core was 388. For this '22 budget, I have 370 right now. Everything else looks about the same, so even the acres, total acres looks about the same. This 370 going down 30 cents accounts for about a $75,000 reduction out of that $103,000. And the difference there, and then if you look at the December '21 futures, right, as of July 10th, you know, it's 344, I'm sorry, December '20 futures, 344, July '21, 365, December '21, 370. So this will be, you know, what drives that '22 budget. But again, we're 18 months out instead of 12 months out. And it actually fell a little bit today. The other difference that's happening to drive that from $75,000 decrease to 103 is while the total acres are about the same between the '21 budget and '22, the amount that's in the corn crop row production has gone down quite a bit from 5,000 to 46. And then we've seen those shift into hay and some into pasture and the CRP going down. And obviously, those are lower yielding production. So that brought in that extra $25,000 decrease. On the expense side, again, only personnel expenses have been forecasted for. They're known, they're predictable and somewhat fixed, and, you know, they account for 77% of the fiscal year '21 budget. So basically, by looking at those, and we, you know, I've looked at them very closely and done the best I could to project them out. So the numbers we're showing you in this forecast should be very close, assuming we don't make any personnel changes to how the '22 budget looks. Everything else, we've left the same. And the other big reason for doing that is we're really trying to emphasize the impact of the challenges of the reduced revenue. And in past years, you know, when we're forecasting out, I'm changing all these other variables. So it's kind of hard to really see, well, what's shifting, what's not. So this way, all we're doing is saying, we're taking the personnel that exists in the '21 budget. We're growing it by some assumptions we'll talk about here in a minute. And then we're looking at how the revenue impacts that, and everything else, we're just holding flat. And then just to back up a little bit, so right now, our '21 budget has a 77% total personnel cost to the total operating budget. I did pull up Lake County Forest Preserves, and they show for their fiscal year '20 budget, they're at 74.5%. So pretty close, but interestingly, they have a separate IMRF and social security levy and fund. So those aren't included in this total, and if you add them in and, you know, redid the math, you'd come out right at about 77%. I pulled up to page two. They don't list there, so you gotta do your own math, but it comes out to 75%. Again, that's personnel to total operating budget of the general fund. This is just the general fund for both of these entities. Again, they have a separate IMRF fund and a separate social security fund and separate levies. So this 75% doesn't include the IMRF social security. For the district, that's all in our general fund. We don't have a separate IMRF levy. So if you add that back in, you know, I'd estimate it right around 78% within the general fund personnel to total operating. So the assumptions for wages that we're incorporating right now that we'd like to be able to kind of start with that '22 budget are a 2% wage increase for all non-contractual, non-bargaining employees, along with that a 2% salary grade increase. And again, that doesn't mean anybody here is getting, you know, that everybody's going to get that same 2%. The only cost to the district's real benefit here would be new employees coming on because that minimum would go up 2%. And then if somebody hit a 10-year or they're getting near that max, actually, it wouldn't even the 10-year, the 4-7 wouldn't affect it. But if you were at the max, this would give you that, it'd allow you to get the 2%, or otherwise, you might not get it. But there is nobody right now in the district that's sitting on that max, so it's kind of a non-issue. So it's a very minimal cost. I just always want to reinforce that because I'm afraid trustees look at that and, you know, they're worried they're proving a 4%. We do have the 4-7 programs, you know, assumed to go forward in the '22 budget. It's existed all the way back to, I think, 2005. Again, moving people to the midpoint, which is supposed to be the market average after seven years on their position. The total cost of that for the district budgeted for, or estimated for '22 is $17,317. And that represents 32 basis points, you know, a little less than or half of a percent of the total increased cost to wages. So if that's all you had, the total, you know, year-over-year wage increase would be 2.32%. For the union contracts, the 150 contract basically just aligns them with all non-contractual employees. So it's the same 2%, it's the same 4-7, and their 4-7 cost would be captured in the $17,000. The police contract actually expired on March 31st of this year, so got to start that process at some point. The current contract gives them all a 2% on their anniversary date. It's not 4-1, but it's the date they hit their anniversary of the district. There's also additional 10-year or anniversary increases, kind of like the 4-7. And there was a promotion of an officer to an officer in charge. So the total cost above the 2% for the police, and so I'm assuming that contract is going forward at 20. It's a very, it's a pretty conservative contract. So the 22 assumptions assume this gets, you know, the contract gets renewed basically at the same cost it is today. So the total cost beyond the 2% is an additional $9,152, which represents 0.17% to the total district increased wage cost. Back that one up. The other big one is seasonals. Were required under state law by January 1st of '22, which will happen during the fiscal '22 budget. They have to get to 12 bucks an hour. So right now, tentatively, we're assuming all the seasonal hours that were budgeted in '21 come back out in '22, and that starting minimal cost goes from 11 to 12 bucks an hour. And it represents a 38 basis point, 0.38% increase year-over-year total wages for the district. On the health insurance side, if you read the summary, we're really recommending a switch to the intergovernmental personnel benefit co-op, this IPBC. It's something we've been looking at very seriously for the last three years. The county actually went to it over two years ago and have done very well under it. What it really brings is they have a history that's 137 member agencies. It's a pooled insurance, kind of like Pderma, and they have a very solid history of rate stabilization. So right now, their average five-year rate increase is 3.6%. You know, and every year, they've shown this to us and they roll that forward, and it's always been between 2% and 3%. They also, because it's a co-op, it's a nonprofit, they don't keep any profits. They distribute any surpluses at the end of the year back to the membership. And that five-year average distribution is represented at about 2.3% of the premium. Unfortunately, and we've seen this, this will be the third year that we've seen this. When we go to them to get the initial enrollment cost, and then let me say one other thing. Next Tuesday at the regular board meeting, there will be a representative here from Gallagher to talk to you about the IPBC, give you all the background, all the detail. We're not taking, obviously, any action tonight, so I'm just giving you a real broad overview there. But the initial enrollment cost is higher, and that's because they don't have specific claims district on the, specific claims data or history on the district. So their actuaries are kind of looking at the things that they can, the basic census-type data, and they're making estimates, and they do those conservatively high to help ensure in that first renewal that nobody's getting burned by it. So they gave us both a six-month rate and an 18-month rate, and I'm rolling this 18-month rate into this 22 assumptions. For the health insurance, it was a 12.7% increase. For dental, it was 3.2. They're fixing that rate for 18 months, so if you annualize it, it really comes out to an 8.5% increase. The other thing too is that's the gross premium, and that's what they'll talk about when they're here next Tuesday. That doesn't take into account the employee cost sharing. That changes things a little bit when you look at the actual net cost of the district after you take those increases on. And then the other thing that they will touch on is that we can reduce that by this estimated 2.3% surplus distribution, which would happen in December of '21 during that fiscal year, and it would go right back literally as a reduction to the health insurance expense for the district. So when we do all of that, this is the total amount we had budgeted in the '21 budget for health insurance, $836,000. Another bad news is that when it rains, it pours. Right now, without any other premium increases, there's changes to the plan from employees, several employees who waived insurance, both existing and people that have left, who waived insurance leading into the '21 budget. So in my '21 budget, there was no insurance cost for them. They weren't, they weren't on the, on the plan. They've now either got into the plan or new employees have come on that are taking, that are enrolled in the plan, replacing somebody that's left. So that increase by itself is $43,494 under the old existing premiums. That represents about a 5% increase over this 836. So that's the first thing we had to contend with. And then I rolled in this estimated, this is basically 12 months of the 18-month surplus, which would be $36,000, so I can back that off. And then this would be the net premium increase of $81,000, and it brings down a total estimated budget cost increase of 10.6 for the health insurance for fiscal year '22. Under the IMRF, interestingly enough, that's actually going down. These rates actually don't reflect, you know, the big hit that the market took, although it's recovered a lot of it now. It'll be interesting to see how it plays out. But you can see, we've always been right around 11 or 12%. They have actuaries that run these numbers, and, you know, we obviously have to pay our rate as they determine it. So it's going down slightly. We show the total net increased cost of IMRF in this first 22 projection of $4,300. And that's just a product of this going down against wages going up. I think we show total wages going up 2.7%. On further operating capital, again, they're not changed. We're holding them flat at the '21 level so we can just focus on, you know, how those reduced revenues impact the overall budget. And again, in these scenarios, the CPI increase accounted for 2.3%. So the reality is, no matter which scenario we do, we're going to have to, you know, absorb those costs. And just generally, that would, you know, you'd estimate at about $40,000 if you took those non-personnel costs and grew them by the 2.3%. So looking at the forecast. Everybody can still hear me okay? Okay. We're getting toward the end here. So scenario one, that starts with the, I call it the full levy. It starts with the reduced '19 levy, and then it grows PTEL, the maximum amount of PTEL from that reduced '19 levy. So we see the property taxes going up to $111,000. This is budget to budget. So the first slide was levy to levy, budget to budget, slightly different. And then we have, in all of these scenarios, you have $214,000 to $217,000 of anticipated reduced revenue. So again, even with that increase, we're looking at reduced revenue of $7,104. And then from all the personnel things we talked about, we show those going up $252,000 to 3.5%. These are the 21 budgeted non-personnel capital expenses. Haven't changed them. There's no change there. So just based on this growth of personnel against the reduced levy, we'd be showing a total deficit of $259,434. And then as I roll that forward for two years, and I assume we take the maximum PTEL levy. And again, you know, it's hard to predict right now what's happening six months from now, yet alone two or three years out. But you see that deficit grow. That's what we've seen every time we've shown these forecasts. Again, because right now, we're showing personnel expenses growing faster than the property tax would. But every, you know, we, every year, we make adjustments. We never allow that to roll out. Scenario two, and then if you look at the reserve impact from scenario one, again, just taking those deficits, running the reserves from what we budgeted for the end of this fiscal year to start the next one, we see them going down from 62% to 47.2. Right now, for the last two years, we've had 3.1 million assigned to the camp. I believe there's about a $10 million camp liability, you know. So again, it's, you know, one-third of what we have identified for the camp, and we'll be updating that in the next month or two. But if you back that camp out, then you see the remaining reserves, 27% down to 16%. And again, that's not to say we're spending this camp. It's just, you know, as a placeholder, so we're aware of that. Then looking at the scenario two, that starts with the '18 higher levy, so it's before the reduction, grows at the max under PTEL, the deficit's only $135,000. And then again, as you roll that one forward, again, you see the deficit continue to grow. But that's because of assumptions with personnel, health insurance, wages grow by two, outpaces it. And if you look at the levy impact on '62 to '51, you back out the camp, '27 to '20. And then the last one, this would be only growing the '19 reduced levy by the $22,000. And this is the levy now, $22,000 levy increase for new development. Budget to budget, I'm showing a $30,000 increase, and that just has to do with the assumptions of what we're saying would be collectible versus non-collectible. And again, so now you're showing $188,000 reduction of revenue. And again, these are, you know, pretty known, that farm lease revenue, unless something happens, you know, very, very surprising with corn, we're going to be impacted by these. So again, now we're showing a deficit in '22 of $440,000 that would need to be made up and/or, you know, looking to use the reserves to sustain some of that. You roll that forward, and obviously, grows pretty quickly. So you're at 575 by the third year out, 73. And then looking at the impact reserves, down to 41. If you back out the camp, you're down to 10%. If you focus just on '22, you know, again, if you were to take that whole deficit out of reserves, hold the 3.1 for camp, you'd be under that 25% threshold that we'd like to try and hold on to. There's a little bit deja vu as we look at this, as I'm putting it together. And that is because this is the, one of the scenarios we showed back in 2018. And basically, it said no increase in '18, and then the maximum levy in '19 and beyond. And it's effectively what we did when we took the '18 increase and then reduced it back out of '19. So that's the closest one we have to scenario two, is what we're talking about. And then this is the one we did last year. So again, the '19 levy reduced, and then maximum levies '20 through '22. So this is scenario two that we're looking at now. Again, pretty similar, not a lot of difference. And then this would be our scenario two that we're just showing now. Now, this is a little interesting. So again, it's similar, but there's a difference here. And that is, in these, in this scenario, we had 204,000 of capital, and here, we're only assuming there was 93,000. So if I back out that difference of capital to make them comparable. And the other differences in both of these scenarios, we were growing those non-personnel expenses by at least 2%, some a little bit more for inflation. So if I just do a So if I just do a conservative 2% and grow that, and then I look at the deficit, you know, they all align very closely. So with 80% of your general fund revenues coming from one source, and that source is very predictable, you know, you can get, and a lot of, as we all know, there's a lot of little things that have changed. But generally, you know, two years ago, we kind of predicted how this would play out. And then actually, just a summary of all three scenarios. And basically what we did is, we, you know, we show the deficit for scenario one, two, and three. And if I just look at the deficit without considering capital, because we're going to, you know, if we had to adjust the operating, the non-capital operating expenses to make up for this, what would we be talking about as far as an impact, you know, to non-capital expenditures? And that would equal 1.7% reduction of total non-personnel expenses and non-capital, and then four tenths and 3.6%. I think this is where Elizabeth's going to, you know, now talk about some of the operationals from a high level, the operational type changes we would need to make. And I guess, you know, have a discussion with you guys about those as well. That's all I have, unless anybody has any questions or comments.
Thank you, Andy.
Let me unshare.
Okay, and if I can get a share screen. Stephanie, can you let Elizabeth share? The second Elizabeth, I think.
She should be able to.
The one, there's two Elizabeths up there, is there one of them that's not going to host? You'll need to probably make me a host or give that opportunity, because I'm in the boardroom. The one that has her, can you see it, Steph?
It, it's, it's, all participants can share right now, so she should be able to share.
Elizabeth has a lot of control.
All right, well, I'm going to, unfortunately, I am not looking like I can share. From here, for some reason, it's not showing up.
It took a minute or two before I could do it after Steph made the change.
Yes, let's see here, I've got, the one that's Elizabeth Kessler, being that executive director. Are you hearing her, Steph?
Sort of.
I can go in my office and do it from there, maybe. You guys will see me on my television. She's going to her office, Stephanie.
Okay.
Does everybody see that on the screen?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, terrific, thank you so very much. I appreciate everyone's patience here. And Andy, thank you for all of your work on the scenarios. He put a lot of hours to work through all those items and the numbers, and he does work the magic to, to make everything flow. And then I had the opportunity to work with our executive team and really take a look at what this would mean by the scenarios that are presented, without getting very specific, but each one would potentially have an impact on our overall budget. And so I just want to leave that with you. As I go through the different scenarios, you've had each of those that are in the back of the document that was prepared out in the board packet. And we really focused on four areas that we would look at in each of the different areas, and looking at the district. We, we've had, as Andy mentioned, since 2011, we've been through a variety of exercises as a leadership team, as a board. I was looking back at the creative ways that we had to work to find ways to continue to move forward to support our mission. We did that through a variety of exercises, through Mission Possible, through our iceberg is melting. I mean, every which way, we have a very creative team, and we've been able to adapt. And I think that speaks a lot to how we continue to move forward. But to say that it hasn't been challenging would, would not be accurate. We've been challenged, not only with COVID, that kind of gave us a look at what it would be like for the summer months to operate with more individuals using our sites, the district being well-received as essential services, and, and knowing that the work that we do is critically important, and how we keep up with all of that has been a challenge. So I'm going to start off with scenario one, and as Andy mentioned, that's a reduction of 1.7% to where we are. And looking at the different areas we focused on, what it would mean to our strategic plan and our strategy, what it means to our workforce, our infrastructure, both built environment and our natural areas, and then our programs. As you can see, under this first scenario, there is impact in some areas that would be more catastrophic than others, in most cases moderate, and so, you know, we would adjust. The strategic plan that you're going to be suspending on Thursday evening, some of the goals that we propose, although most show organizational capacity of the staff that we have, there'd be a available, ability to go forward with some, but status quo, not be able to be as ambitious with some of those goals. We've already gone with seasonal staff not in place this summer, so it would be a repeat of what we had, and projects being deferred, and areas not getting done to keep up with our management activities. More time, paid time off and loss from our full-time other exempt employees picking up in other areas of the agency. If we had to move into a reduction of part-time staff or even full-time staff, that is going to present some issues, and there would be very specific areas that things would have to change, looking at how we would work with our Wildlife Resource Center, our Cultural History Archival Program. Even our agricultural program would be problematic with us being able to keep up with it, and we'd have to probably look at reducing hours of our visitor centers. Side experiences with full-time staffing, obviously, as you look, and we've showed this metric before, our land-to-staff ratios compared to our other open space agencies is, is very, is much smaller ratio than in the land that, that, what we manage. We have more acres per staff that we have, and so we're already behind. And thus, the challenge of getting our projects completed and all the activities has been strictly to not having the number of staff able to move those projects forward. When we look at training, obviously succession planning is extremely important. Our strategic plan has us focused on to build future leaders, and we've already had to reduce. Our staff has had those impacts over the years, not only from a reduction in training and other areas with cost sharing with our health benefits, but this would reduce our ability to train our staff, and then we're losing knowledge and what's important to keep up with current trends. In regards to the outdoors and being able to take care of areas, if we had to, excuse me a second here, I'm trying to, on my screen, can't see this slide here. Reduction overtime would mean severe impact with storm damage, snow removal, and emergency response. We've already gone to some of our sites during the winter being closed strategically, and essential duties would have to be absorbed by our exempt employees. If we were to look at a wage freeze, that's very difficult in a time with inflationary growth, and we've got collective bargaining and contractual employees, so that could be problematic. Obviously, a very bad impact to employee morale. And like I said before, employees have already paid it forward to maintain and support the district over this past decade as we transitioned to support the taxpayers here in McHenry County and to provide that level of service. Again, same thing with reduction of benefits. We've had that cost sharing, and so this would have impact relative to some of the bargaining agreements of contractual employees and what we provide. In programming, as far as subscriptions and dues, this area has already been reduced, and this would be more reduction in those areas, professional organizations, agency memberships that support us for at-risk and from involvement for mitigating and learning things that, again, you either pay the money forward or you pay it on the back end, and so that would, would potentially go away. And then overall reduction in our marketing and promotion activities and our response to local units of government and partners, we'd be in a reactive mode versus proactive. With programs, just like this past summer, we had to reduce our special events. We scaled back on our programs, providing only what we could do. We have to take a look at our school programs and what additional opportunities to increase fees, cost recovery on those areas. In regards to infrastructure, we've got a reduction in capital purchases. This is assuming that all of our capital will be funded from reserves, and projects would be evaluated. We would use a triage approach and move forward with deferred maintenance. We're only taking care of things that we absolutely need to, to, again, preserve the reserves. Technology is an area, we have found during COVID, it's been vital for us and have been able to adapt. But obviously, investments in technology, there would be limited resources to move forward. We'd have to trade out and exchange on certain areas, but we'd have to postpone upgrades, and so there would be limited advancement. And then with our, our land management and reduction in maintenance, we would continue to have significant reductions. Our standard of care of facilities and sites and maintenance would be decreased, and we potentially would see more undesirable activities with vandalism. Obviously, all the great effort that the district has used on our branding and our image and individuals using our sites, it would show a different face. It would start to deteriorate and may require closures of sites that have been currently open to the public due to our inability to maintain. Now, many of these areas don't happen right away, but over time, when natural areas and our sites are not maintained, they do show wear. So that is what the first scenario would be. And, and looking just at the pledge that we had of what we stand for and the services that we provide. Under scenario two, it's more optimistic, it's still some reductions, but the good news is, is we can adapt and we can manage. And some of those same areas that I went through, we go through the same scenarios, and it ends up showing from a moderate to high to a low impact. And so under these areas, there's still some challenges, but we feel that our strategic plan can move forward. We've been there with COVID, we've modified, and it may still require us to reduce the number of seasonal staff that we would bring on for the summer, but we would do that strategically versus across the board as we did this year. We would look to not reducing our part-time staff and not reducing our full-time headcount under this scenario. We would also then in training have some minor reductions, so we can continue to keep everybody current and do the best that we can to build for succession planning. Again, some impact on reduction of overtime, but limited, so that we can still maintain those areas for snow events, weather events. Under the wage freeze and overtime and reduction in benefits, there would be no reduction. Under programs, again, we'd look to reducing our membership and professional organizations and journals, and then some moderate reductions to our overall marketing and promotion. We've already shifted to invest in social media, which is helping us greatly in increasing our reach and introducing new audiences to the district, and so that's embedded. But some of the other areas we'd have to look at, again, response to units of local government and participating with our partners. Again, we'd be in a reactive mood versus proactive, but not so much under this scenario. Again, under the reductions of events and programs, we'd look to charge for some special events, more cost recovery fee-based programs. Again, looking at what services we provide to the schools and reduce where appropriate to make the necessary alignment. And then for capital, it assumes that our capital would be funded out of reserves with minor impact to infrastructure and equipment. Again, deferred maintenance, but not as extreme as we would be in some of the other scenarios. And then in technology and land management, no reduction. We continue on our current pace, again, not really moving forward as much as we would like to, but at least keeping up with where we need to be. And then on the last scenario, that we look at the scenario three, where there'd be a reduction of 3.6%. We're just going to take each of these areas, and it's going to go further to the extreme. And again, it's not so much of one year. As we speak to this and the executive team, we didn't want to present this is that, to paint the picture, that this is worse than it is, but we have to look back of where we've been to go forward. And we're down to our core of what we do, unless there's certain areas that we're no longer going to be doing. And we've had our residents say that they approve of how we've been doing business, and they appreciate, there's always room for improvement. But, so our strategy, we would be unable to move on any of the new goals that we have worked together to, to focus on. We have everything mostly in an internal capacity, but if we start to lose our staff, then of course, that doesn't provide us the opportunity to move forward in all of our goals. Under reduction of staff, this would mean our seasonal staff would not be brought on. We may have to surgically, in some of the areas, bring back some staff, but for the most part, that would not happen, again, for the second year. Part-time staff would also then likely need to, to go away in some of those key areas. And so our work that we've done with our GIS, our Cultural History Archive, and our Wildlife Resource Center program will end. We won't be able to maintain those programs, the agricultural, in the way it exists today. And then the agricultural program would be shifted to other areas of the district to manage. And of course, we anticipate reduced hours in our visitor centers due to the reduction of front desk staff. As far as full-time staffing, this is the core, that's the little engine that works. And this impact, obviously, to the overall organization would depend on the positions which were eliminated, and then the activities and programs that are no longer being provided. I think this would provide extreme risk exposure for the district. Obviously, with potential errors and omissions, we're already on a very lean team to get the work done. Our sites and facilities would experience closures and or reduced hours. And this would be the breaking point for almost after a decade, to where those weaknesses are going to show themselves. Obviously, the climate and culture of the organization will be impacted adversely, and our team effectiveness will be lost. Talent will begin to look for employment in other places, and what we've been able to pull together and to manage for all these lean times, it will begin to unwind, and it will just compound itself as well with the staff that'll be able to take care of this agency as we've done for a long time. And so I do believe it will have a ripple effect that will go through the organization. And it will take more than a decade to, if not greater, to bring the organization back to the level of excellence in what we've built as an organization with such a major cut. There will be issues with collective bargaining. Reduction in training, again, this is loss of essential training, even mandatory training. Reduction of overtime, again, eliminating weekend storm damage, snow removal, emergency response, and essential duties would be absorbed by our exempt employees. And again, more loss of paid time off for those employees. And then wage freezes, reduction in benefits, again, difficult to see to hold that in, in place here. Again, same issues with employee morale and talent is a, is a likely outcome of what would occur in those areas. And then with programs, again, subscriptions and dues would have to be suspended. Agency memberships, which we participate in, that connects us to the conservation community, would be, would be out, we would no longer be able to support that. Again, moving the organization to go backwards versus where we've come from, and, and that being current. Marketing, overall, a big reduction to our marketing promotion efforts from print collaterals, giveaways, and target mailings, which would then impact our educational programs and outreach, and we would scale those back. So no additional revenue to get out of the cycle that we've been in with that. And of course, this would reduce our programs, fee-based programs, more greater cost recovery types of programs with what staff we have, and then potential reduced staffing accordingly. And then again, the capital assumes that capital is funded from reserves with continued deferred maintenance, that even becomes more extensive due to reduction in staff capacity to handle the project. So we're not able to get the projects done, and we're kind of on that cycle. So from a one-year, I think as Andy stated, the board has a discussion of could we go into reserves to get by? So from a one year, I think as Andy stated, the board has a discussion of could we go into reserves to get by? But it's the overall cumulative impact, I think, to where we've been showing this, that this was coming and thus the challenges that are here. On technology, again, unable to upgrade on our hardware, our software may become outdated and then we would have to just do what we could. And so replacement might be deferred for about a year, a year and a half before we could afford to do that. And then if units fail or systems go down, there may be time to get them back online. And then extreme reductions in our land management, we would lose ground on the work that we've done to restore areas. Not being able to keep up with our regular prescribed burns, our seed collection, handling those necessary herbicide areas to keep and push back our invasive species and to take care of our sites with all the increased public. It's just, we're in that vicious cycle here. So that impact to the organization and the negative focus on sites looking poorly that are increasing vandalism then doesn't become the brand of a destination marketing organization that the district has built itself to help the county and to come out to be a place to visit and to raise a family. And so we're a big part of that green economy. And so, you know, I think as we align, one of our goals of our strategic plan was how do we position the district best to be responsible stewards, but then also to be positioned. So in 2026, when our debt is paid off, that we have the public support so that we can continue to move forward. We're celebrating our 50th anniversary next year and it seems important to what are our priorities and how do we invest in what's important to that of the community. And that's all I have to leave for discussion. So I will exit this and then come back into the boardroom.
Andy, can you still hear us?
Yeah, you're muted, Andy.
Okay, Andy, I know with this unusual year, what kind of deficit are we projecting this year if things continue as they are right now?
I couldn't understand your question. I can't quite hear you.
What are we, at the end of the year, what are we projecting for a for a final outcome financially for this fiscal year at this point in time? I know it's very early in the fiscal year, so it's hard to say.
Well, if, if, if we were to fully expand like all the capital and those things, we'd be looking at, if you're talking about the reserves, you're probably talking about whether or not we're in with a surplus or a deficit, is that?
Right.
What are you looking? Yeah, um, if we bought all the capital, it should be a deficit, even with the, we've had some vacancies. You know, again, above and beyond the seasonals that we purposely didn't fill to offset, you know, the lost revenue. There's been vacancies which are going to generate unanticipated, you know, a surplus. But we budgeted $385,000 of regular repair and replacement of capital. These aren't the camp trails and parking. These are vehicles, pieces of equipment, those types of things. All that was from reserves. So when, you know, to answer your question, if we buy all of that or most of it, which it's, most, most of it's very much needed, you would, you know, look to a $200,000, $300,000 deficit. If we don't, then you'll probably see a surplus again. Does that answer your question?
It certainly did. Thank you.
Okay. And when, in the, in the reserves I projected for the presentation, I'm assuming it's all spent, you know, because I want to, obviously I've got to be conservative.
Sure.
This has been very enlightening and provocative and will take some time to adjust. But, I mean, plus of this for people to consider. Obviously, our budget needs to be approved by the county board. And we may think we're justified in going in one direction to achieve our goals. And that would require taking the detail that we can, but based on 18 or 19. And in this year of the COVID and all the difficulties that local units of government are confronting, I think we're going to have a hard time not being in sync with the leadership of the county board. And I have no idea what the leadership of the county board is thinking. But I think that as, as we progress in our planning, and obviously we have to plan, we need to be aware that we may not get all that we asked for. And so we need to think in terms of, well, okay, best, best case scenario and worst case scenario. I don't have any
I hear you.
To say, but it's not entirely in our hands. Okay.
It might.
So however we structure our activities in the coming months, liaison with the county is going to be, I think, important. Otherwise, we may find ourselves out on a limb and scrambling at the last minute, you know, next spring to deal with the budget.
So, I can't remember what the agenda is like for Thursday and Tuesday. We have this topic on both nights or just one night on the stuff there. But the agenda for Thursday talks about the agenda for next Tuesday and it's on Tuesday. And it's on Tuesday. So we have a couple of opportunities yet to do this, although I know Andy and Elizabeth and staff would like to pass the puzzle. So.
Well, the unfortunate thing is we, I mean, we're ahead of the county, we have to make decisions, right? So we need to know what we want to do with the levy prior to any decisions being made. So, and if we don't know what's going to be acceptable going forward, that makes us put us in a tight spot. So there have been, you know, unfortunately, there have been times in the past when we've been told not to take the levy and the county went ahead and took theirs. So, you know, and that's kind of goes back to that, that we've had this kind of flat levy for a number of years now. And obviously, we know we're going to be formally trying to take it. I mean, is there, is there the possibility of at least extending the levy this fall and then abating it by the time spring rolls around, you know, to get a better idea of what's going on? I mean, I know that there are going to be other agencies. I know, I think it's the mental health board that's going to be asking for their levy. At least definitely because of what they're going to try to do last month. But, you know, so I don't, I don't know, do we? Is anyone leaning to one of these scenarios or?
Well, obviously, the easy one to sell is not taking it. And that's easy, that's the easy one to sell. That's the one, easy one to sell is the county board. The harder one, that most of it. But we just saw that scenario two is the easiest. I mean, that means it's the most beneficial.
Let me just comment that while making these, the analysis is very clear because everything else is held constant. But in the real world, you know, probably everything else is not constant. And there are unexpected expenses and there might be, you know, things that are budgeted that aren't spent for, and therefore there might be extra dollars that appear. The premise that, on which all this is constructed, is that the funds that have been assigned to camp are sort of taken out of the reserve and don't figure in the calculation of what is left after expenses are met in the next three years. Now, you know, it seems to me that there wouldn't be some flexibility to depending on how things evolve to utilize those camp funds to help support operation. I think we all realize that in five years and then the sixth year after the pension loan bond is retired, so it's sort of in a two-step fashion, there is going to be a significant reduction in the property tax left because we're not going to have any bonds outstanding.
16%.
So if we can get through the next five years in a very conservative fashion and, and address how we can structure something to present to the taxpayers and the county board as to funding going forward that will allow the district to fulfill its obligations and capture some of that reduction in a whatever the appropriate term is, property tax levy increase at that time. To me, I mean, people are sort of short-sighted and if you, if you can say, well, you're going to have, the pain is going to stop at some point. At some point, people want the pain to stop sooner rather than later. But I think that if we, if we mind the story very carefully, we might get to that point where we could sell, market, explain to the county and the public why it takes more than, you know, eight or nine million dollars to run the district the way they would like to see, the way we all think it should be run. But, so, I mean, that's, those are just vague thoughts that I'm jumping around in my head.
All your good points, the fact that we do have a surplus that you somewhat with, that can help us get in the 2026. If we have that money to work with there. Do we have a list of the projects that we're looking at for the coming year? And what the total of those would be?
Yes, the capital asset, the capital asset management plan. So if we pull up and we can send out soon and I can dig out what we gave you last year, staff is in the process of updating that, but because we moved everything up, we said that wouldn't be something that would be available.
Sure.
July meeting, but we could look to what we presented last year and then if things that were budgeted this year because of COVID, you know, watching master tracking, how things being pushed out slightly. Most things have moved forward. There's a few items that were delayed at this point, but, but yes, I think we can get that for you if that would be helpful to the.
Well, those are the kinds of things that if, okay, if we said we, if we looked at the most of the surplus or the funds we are sitting here, we said, okay, we're going to deficit spend. Yeah, right. This deficit spending was $500,000. Yeah, if we're going to deficit spend so many thousand dollars a year, now this is 2026. You know, not the whole, we still have our 25% of what we need to keep of our budget. I believe that's the right percentage. And then there's 25%.
That's what we want to maintain.
Maintain the 25%. So, okay, so how many, you know, how many thousands of dollars can we spend each year above, beyond what we take in? And we've got that over five or six years and that's where we'd be. There would be a plan. Then we'd have to look at the projects and say, okay, would we be able to do the projects that we need to do with that money? And, or we would not be able to. What projects are out there? I hear there's projects thrown out and I don't know what years are going to be started or what's there, you know, and I just, so that's what we, that's what we need to look at is, is, what do we think we can get by on for the next four or five years? And what do we think we want to do? And what do we think we can work with the county to do? So we have, we have a few moving parts there. And, and not that we always want to do the minimum of what there is, but we we have to, we have to be able to bear what we can get by on, what we can work with. And then from there, we have to be able, if we need more money, we have to be able to go to the county and say, this is what we need and why we need. That was clear in the last time we went for a levy increase and they made us take it away. They wanted, we need this piece of equipment that costs this much. We need, they wanted us to itemize to get to the 211,000 that we have in the levy.
Yeah, the, the one of that, I think you're right. I think as long as we've done a very conservative approach to build up our fund reserves because being responsible, knowing that there's not enough funding to set up the conservation act to pay for those capital improvements. I mean, you can go out and do a amount of funding bond and you can take care of the land and purchase land. But the act is very specific. You can't do that. Not that you'd want to issue another, but there's just, you have limited funding vehicles. And since we are predominantly on tax report, that's the challenge. Our user fee structure for programs and activities, you know, we want to start moving with more cost recovery. That helps, but that's not that cover the larger piece of that.
What is the total amount of that? I know you're, I'm starting to interrupt your thought, but what is, what is the total of that?
Total what?
You're talking about programs.
Programs, yes, like that.
What, what we actually?
Yeah, I think this past year, education, we were around 75. I think our forecasting for this would ride down due to COVID. Somewhere around 55.
In a normal year. If we're not going to say normal, yeah, I think, yes.
Yeah, we were growing, we were on an upward, you know, to bring in more revenue for our classes. Key forecast. That's now.
Key forecast assumptions, revenue.
It's halfway in.
It's no, it's not even half.
Yeah, but to your, to answer your question, John, in the past, we were kicking our way back up there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
We made a budget this year for COVID to bring in for our educational programs, district of 75,405. Our hunting program, 48,000. And then in the forecasting that we shared, we brought those numbers down based on where we kind of had a reset point. I think we can come back out of that, but we didn't want to give some assumptions. I mean, these are variables. We may vary by ourselves with COVID being done and our programs are back up and we hit our marks and we do better than what we're in. But I think you're right. As long as there's fund reserves, there is a perception that, you know, we've got working cash. I do believe there are some large, you know, deferments that again, is just your vehicle schedules, everything. And again, we don't live in a perfect world, but we've worked really hard to get those on a rotation schedule that's longer than what you would normally want in optimal conditions. We've understood we don't have optimal, we haven't been working.
Oh, right. No, no, excuse me. But yes, things need to be replaced, repaired in some type of timeframe. But there are projects that relate to the land that we're going to have the land to eternity. So we, you know, may wish to say, well, we'd like to see this piece brought into some type of natural balance in the next five years. It may be 20 years. see this piece brought into some type of natural balance in the next five years, it may be twenty years. The land is gonna be there, we own, what we have to do is, you know, balance the you know, these budgetary issues. And, you know, deal with the personnel costs, deal with the maintenance of buildings and machinery and so forth. I don't think we should neglect the land. But I don't see us expanding our personnel. In other words, if to bring more land up to the ideal requires hiring so many people per hundred acres or five hundred acres. I mean, I think that's a pipe king for, as far as I can see.
That's exactly what the natural resource plan does.
It doesn't mean it can't be done in twenty-five years. But I don't see it being done in the, in the next five years. So I think we just, you know, have to think, well, think practically, try to think innovatively. Either park yard, either camp, grants and things that can funnel money into good causes. And we just need to keep the lights on and keep, keep plugging away, it's not gonna be all one person's vision and another person's vision. But there is a political element in this that we can't ignore. And so however we proceed in the next year, I think we need to be communicating with the county board committees that are relevant to let them know, hey, we're thinking about all these things, we know you're thinking about all these things, and we don't wanna you know, we don't wanna misread what, what's what's feasible for the, you know, for the, for the ground better, the residents of the county and, and our mission, we want to sort of balance all these, so.
One, one I bring up though, about the land, owning the land and the law is either, it doesn't save the things, oh. I, I know, the piece that I have, there's a piece down the road, I mean, I part the edges this last week about it. We haven't, I don't know, I'll begin this, it's just down the, down the water river in my house. And it's been, it's been prairie grass and all the natural plants. Some of the grass gets so high and, and, uh, that's been fine. All of a sudden this year, across that whole field, I can see poplar trees, cottonwood trees growing above.
Thank you.
Everywhere out there. Well, if we go out taking out those cottonwood trees for twenty years, we will have a cottonwood forest.
That will be expensive.
That will be expensive to take out.
Thank you.
Um, so, yeah, it'd be great if we could take that piece of dirt, we don't really have a big plan for it, we can just freeze it for the next twenty years, maybe we need to stay ten degrees on that for the next twenty years and cottonwood trees won't grow. And then when we get around to it, we can, we can fix it the way we want it, but, and maybe we like those cottonwood trees there, but I can, I think cottonwood trees could take, I think cottonwood trees could take over the world if we love them. And, so, so we have some, we have some current expense or we have some future expenses that are bigger. So at some point in time, we have to, if, if we, if we identify those properties and say, they're gonna cost us this much today, they're gonna cost us this much fifteen years from now, we have that story to tell these.
I, I.
They may say, let's take care of it fifteen years from now, that may be the answer we get.
Or can it be burned, you know, sort of burnt down and, and then by, by a year or two? I have no idea, that's, obviously, you're closer to that and Ted is very capable of answering that question, and, you know, when do you cycle that type of temporizing measure?
The trees might be big enough that the fire will might not, for a moment.
These, these are really good discussions, I guess, and one of the things is we provided on scenarios of what is immediate time to think about this, but what is the board's priorities, what is your focus? The challenge is that, you know, there's always the political environment, there's always the increase taxes, there's always that conversation that every year.
Yeah, that would be the opposite, Bill was gonna say, he's gonna say parkland, I would say secure the land and worry about everything else less. That would be my, I, I'd throw the whole budget at the land and, because I think that's what the conservation district's about, and then whatever is left over, that's what I'd spend on whatever else.
Well, it's committed to say, just, because I, I get what you're talking about, because we look at the natural capital improvements plan and what the vision was, that doesn't mean we're in a position to actually do it, I mean, part of that, part of that is taking out farmland that we currently at least own over time. So maybe that just gets pushed off, right? So now we're not necessarily taking that on right away and having that additional expense, we're trying to maintain.
I don't think we, I don't think we're in a position for getting farmland out, you know.
Exactly, but that's my point.
That's not something we're gonna do, that's something we're not gonna do.
But that's. Right, but that's my point, I mean, part of that vision where you're talking about more employees and whatever, and the cost does come from convert, conversion. And if we're not there, it doesn't mean the plan itself is gone, maybe it just means we're pushing that a little bit further.
Or did we have any think, was there anything, I don't remember the plan well enough, but, um, was there any conversion between now and 2026?
Version from farmland?
Oh, yeah, he mentioned it, yeah. It wasn't a lot.
About acres, maybe four, four hundred acres?
Yeah, the strategic plan, we've identified five hundred acres, they've already started doing stuff with it, it's probably on, he can undo his mic too. But the school springs and they've done some projects and they feel that even within all of that in the strategic plan, wouldn't, we understand that the plan, it, it's a plan, it was, we had a big conversation about, you know, what years and how many dollars, it just needs to be recognized, and it's just as important as our bricks and mortar, it's easy for people to look at roads and bridges, that we must look at our land in a very similar way, but it, it too needs care, it needs the, you know, work that's been done to restore. It doesn't take much, it cannot hurt the site when they're doing it, but if the branch of the staff doesn't do that, probably your cottonwoods and your buckthorn or your honeysuckle to, to take over.
Yeah, I don't want those, I'm willing to donate. John, we did drop, I think it was about five hundred, it was in Andy's presentation, but I think it was about five hundred acres from twenty twenty-one.
Ed's mic is off, so Ed, please. Go ahead, go ahead.
Ed, you, you need to help.
I can answer a couple of questions that might be helpful. One is that the natural resource department for many years now has not moved on large projects unless we have grant funding or we have partnerships. So when you see a project like School Springs or you see a project like the Goose Lake wetland restoration, those are typically funded by outside sources, so we're not going to operations for them. The natural capital improvement plan basically concentrated on the small disjointed pieces of farmland that we have as opposed to our large blocks of farmland. If you get an opportunity to review it or read through it, you'll, you'll see that some of it is reforestation that is actually being done on old hay ground. So we've tried to purposely minimize the amount of farmland that we would take out of production. And there's always room within that plan to shift priorities on a year-to-year basis. So you start with a plan, you look at where you can pick up the funding to do things in that plan. And then you, you shift those priorities based on where funding is available. And we have operated that way for probably the last couple of decades. I don't, if that helps answer some of those questions.
Yeah, yes, it does, yes. So with the land inputs and the staffing and priorities and understanding, I mean, that's one, and then we've got, obviously, the visitor shift, the users that come up to our sites to use and enjoy. And in order to keep the sites open for the public, we have certain standards of care that we promote, it's in the perspective, yes, to be able to do.
Well, part of this too can sometimes be, like, I mean, we talked about capital. If I'm looking at this right, and we're trying to draw primarily from reserves for capital, we, and we assume that is the, the amount we want in budgeted for capital, we're on the low and then on the high end, we have three years of global reserve funding for capital projects.
I think more like two, I think we have one point six million in there, and this year we're using five hundred and fifty, or six, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars of that. So, Ed, so we have, I think a little bit less than.
We did, if, if we weren't trying to add to there, we're.
No, that's, John, we're the three points, whatever million we have budgeted for, not budgeted, assigned to camp.
That's about using the camp money.
Right. And that was right here.
So you, you could do the camp money over the next five years.
Yeah, let's see, certainly, too. Yeah, we've been assigning three point one mil for camp in all of these areas.
Is that, that, but that has also been figured in to end up part of the funding we were holding to make that twenty-five percent?
So that's above, I think that's, and you might have to answer that, but I think that's a above. We have less camp than estimated unassigned reserves, and that totals about five million, five and a half million.
When you figure our reserves and we as a percentage of, of our budget, you, you put camp and everything together, is that correct?
No, he said we're gonna camp out.
General fund, that's a part of your general fund.
You're muted.
So.
And you explained the twenty-five percent, that's based on your general fund.
Those general fund.
Not dedicated, not.
So camp doesn't, we don't need, so if we took camp down to zero, we would have, it's a twenty-five percent left in the, left twenty-five percent in the general fund.
Currently, camp has three million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
Plus the one point six that's in camp already.
So in, right, there, there's one point, I don't have the financial from me, I was trying to pull it up. But the camp fund has the, we'll say, one point six fund balance in it. Less, you know, the projects that are budgeted this year, I think it's a half a million or six hundred thousand. I can pull it up in a second. So there's a million dollars, let's say, of reserves in the camp fund for future camp needs. In addition to that, within the general fund, just on paper, just on our reports, we're saying of the total five point seven million dollars reserve, let's assign three point one of that for camp needs, because we know they're there, we know the camp needs are much greater than that. In fact, it's over ten million dollars over the next ten years, but again, you know, as you, as, as you've really sharpened your pencil like you're suggesting, John, you know, what can we get by with in the next three or five? But anyway, it's, it's what's in the camp fund, that million bucks plus the three point one, you'd be looking at, you know, the four point one as a total available camp funding, and you'd still have twenty-five percent, actually about twenty-eight percent of unassigned unrestricted reserves in your general fund, twenty-five percent of total annual operating revenue. There's, there's nothing that's, we can't go below that. You know, but like, when we're going to issue these debt certificates, you know, the reason those rates are gonna be so cheap is because we are, you know, double A plus, we're one below the highest rating by both USP and Moody's, and the reserves is a big part of that. So once you fall below that, that wouldn't be the case anymore, but who knows when we issue debt again?
Right.
The, the other, you know, one of the, one of the parts of the camp that we, you know, we went through this last year when we did the camp update, you know, we're including the vehicles, so the district has a fleet of, I think it's sixty-nine now, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but anyway, you know, let, let's just call it sixty, just for an even number. If the average life of the vehicles is ten years, we should be replacing six every year. Several years ago, when we didn't, we realized, you know, we don't have a funding source for the camp, and, and we're sharpening the pencil, trying to figure out how do we make this work? We got off of a proactive replacement, and now, as you know, if it can last another year without a tremendous transmission expense, whatever, the vehicle stays on the road, and that's where you're only seeing two, maybe three vehicles in the last several budgets come forward. So, you know, it's over a million dollars of the camp needs is just in vehicle replacement, so I'm, I just bring that out because it's, there's, there's things in there that are real needs, that includes the big tractors and those things too.
Your tractors should last forever.
Yeah.
I got tractors that work much harder than yours that are off the.
Well.
I have a farm truck, fifteen years old.
Yeah, I won't argue with you. But our average vehicle life, the last time we did the camp was thirteen-plus years. So that was a year and a half ago, I think, that it was thirteen-plus, so it's, you know, we're, we're, you're, as they get to fifteen, things are gonna start happening.
Yeah, it's gonna rush out, I mean, my, my fifteen-year-old farm truck, the engine is perfect on transmission, it should not come with it. But, um, but, um, training the engine is perfect on it, but the body's gonna fall off for too long.
No, that was.
I was gonna say, those are the exact pieces though, so we, we modified, right, here's the best practice of lighting the bike in optimal settings, we've adjusted to increase. So the question is, are there other areas that you feel that, that it's okay, that, that deferred maintenance, that it, the placement schedule goes out longer, I mean, those are things that's, I mean, that's what we end up working through, is we've got so many resources, we keep splitting the pie into many creative ways and.
I guess I think about the fact that when I left the straw field just to come here, the tractor that was running the vaylers, the first tractor I ever bought. And, well, everybody knows all of that, so, that tractor's been around a while. And, um, so, tractors and that kind of thing, we shouldn't replace them often.
Yeah, they come up the street.
They shouldn't, we don't.
A long, a long time ago. Yeah, I think it's the fleet, the number of vehicles, you know, with COVID, we had to just get allowed, it's just efficiencies, and when you're a countywide organization trying to leave and depart to get to different areas, it's not like in a small quadrant here, you know, this, this is just how you make the best use of staff efficiencies.
I'm gonna answer what is probably a question that I know the answer to, so, what is the recommendation of administration as to which one of these scenarios the board should receive down? In other words, are you, you presenting them and, and saying, pick your poison, or are you presenting them and saying, please strongly support the point to it?
Good question, so, I guess I'll start off and then my, my team can come behind me to be, you know, it all depends on what's your ultimate, you know, and someone who makes the assumptions that the district understands the the financial concerns of the community. If we understand that the district is well-received, that we're the best stewards, and that we have a responsibility to care for the voter-pleaded land and assets, they depend. And we've got very strong approval ratings as being a responsible unit of local government. It's a challenge because, right, coming out of COVID and there's a lot of talk. And so I can say the, the one option of, of, unless there's a strategy of the, of willingness somehow pull up and change the course at some point in the not-too-distant future, option three isn't a good trajectory for the utilization, not just on by itself, because it's what we've done collectively. We see where the county is, we see what the district's done, we see what schools have done. And, and we've been good stewards, we've been doing the right thing, and then just because it's not so good and everybody else now, it's, you know, we were at the party first, we, we started the, the process, so. One and two provides challenges, but one and two allows us to come out of it. I think looking at, based on being an essential service provider, and if you can make the argument to get support from the constituents of why the value is what it is, but it's all going to get that. You know, I think we, we left at a place to where, I think we assumed that's where the startup office area one, being it was what we agreed to versus going back, so that's kind of why we left it back, right? Obviously, the other presents an opportunity.
If you go to the county board with three, it's like, wait, you know, oh, it's true, rather, that'll be like, maybe. If you go to the county board with three, it's like, wait, you know, oh, it's true, rather, that'll be like, maybe, rather.
Well, it'd be like, okay, but I thought you and I guys agreed to do this, so that's why we put it there, there's an opportunity, but I don't know that that's, I mean, again, clearly, we were open, everything was closed, um, but, so we led with one, um, would I love to? Absolutely.
Sure.
Well, I have to refer to the subject document that we didn't get to, like, saw this on the email, of preparing for the board meeting. For Elizabeth, you read, uh, scenario one, reduced by one point seven, you have it highlighted as yellow. Uh, number two is highlighted in green for go, uh, and number three is red for howl, so.
Are you gonna make color coordination?
I mean, I kind of see it right here.
There you go.
No, you got, yeah, that's on your table.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, it's this one right here.
Yeah, that's the front one, like, oh.
It's in the back, last three pages or so.
Yeah, but you were there using that analogy, perhaps, I, um, yeah, the, uh, it, it is, it depends on solutions, it depends on priorities. Um, one has occurred over the past decade, and, and we've been balancing, it's like you have a lot of plates to move, and you've been servicing a community that well-receives us, and everybody wants us to be everything, you know, we're in the schools, and we're doing programs, and we're taking care of lands, and we're, you know, get more sites open, put more trails in, and so we're, we're, we're trying to appease to everybody, and, and so we've been doing it. As challenging as that, I'm so proud of our staff, because we, we manage, but it's been, it's been hard.
Probably won't be in schools this year.
Yeah.
Would there be any, uh, mechanism whereby we could invite some key members of the county board to a meeting and present where we're at? We have these options. I think we'd have to compress the consequences of those options, but, you know, um, this is where we're at, one, you know, one, two, or three, they all have some, uh, issues associated with them, but, uh, we're taking this very seriously and see if we get any, um, maybe I'm trying to be too, um, maybe I'm assuming too much in the county board, but, but I think if, if there are people there who have their eyes and ears open, and they see what we're looking at, um, we might get a sense of what they think, um, would be feasible, and they would recognize that we're making them an honest effort to be open, transparent, and responsible for the things we're supposed to be responsible for.
I think we need to get a little further into this before we do that, you could say, okay, this is what we can do with this amount of money, this is what we're gonna do with the extra money, and then give a story on that, and, okay, these are the projects we're gonna do with that money. Um, then you're, if you're gonna sign, yeah, if we, if we get an extra couple hundred thousand dollars, we can just, you know, leave it open-ended, we can do a better job.
I'm just throwing it in.
You can't just say we're gonna do a better job, you gotta, you gotta say, we're gonna, we're gonna fix these trails, or we're going to, um, do this project.
Buy these vehicles.
Or, yeah, I, I don't think you're gonna get people excited over vehicles.
Yeah.
You, you need, you need to be able to say, we have this project here that we've invested two hundred thousand dollars, we're going to, you know, you almost need to single out some things that you're not going to do if you don't have that money, because nobody's gonna get excited over the fact that you're inviting money.
Right.
Well, I, but I would say that they need to know that we're at the point of thinking of these three options, or, you know, the PTAL based on eighteen, the PTAL based on nineteen, or the PTAL based on, you know, new development, and each one of those choices, um, you know, has consequences, and we're, um, I think.
And, and we have reserves, what the county board has chosen to do over the last few years, even though they've raised, they've taken in more money, they've also chosen to spend their reserves and get reserves away from Valley High and whatever else, and then they say, well, what are your reserves? And go ahead and spend them.
Right.
That, that may, that may be their exact, right, because that seems to be their strategy at this point in time.
Their strategy can, they can do that for their strategy, because they have other funding sources that should, they get into a problem. They just, last year, they did put them, um, canvas that, it went to max.
Sure.
So it's easier for them to, to, um.
They have so many different levies.
Exactly, so they have that, they have that capacity. And part of the reason we tried to maintain ours is just to maintain that protection. And one of the difficulties is that, because we're a separate agency, you can't like, it's not like being part of the overall county and saying, we like this program, right? Because I think you get a lot of people who like our program, and you wouldn't cut that program, you might cut something else, but every agency is being able, is being asked to do this. So, because you have constituents who, right now, already say, I was just talking to somebody the other day, they're frustrated we closed the site near their house during the winter, because they, they don't live close enough, like, maybe, there are some people out there that have their homes next to the conservation areas, they can walk in, but those of us who have to drive from places, once they're closed, we're closed. And so, um, I think there's a lot of support out there. How that translates into working with the county is a different story, or it's no, a different matter. Um, and maintaining what we have done and not letting it deteriorate is important, is to respect the tax dollars that have already been paid. It's not just, I mean, we're being asked, in some sense, it is like a business, and year after year, we're not able to capture inflationary costs. I can't imagine any business keeping that up. They might do things like, they might go through cheaper inputs, they might, you know, keep wages flat, they might do all sorts of things, but they're not gonna keep up for a long time. So it's, and I think when we went before them, the committee last year, we said, this is what we've done, this is how we would cut back, you know? How much more are we supposed to do?
They didn't buy it at all.
Well, we had already committed.
Yeah, we did.
We had already committed at that point, and so we, we held that commitment, we made a commitment, but, I mean, it is, but the comments were made, how do we maintain that? Um, and we are, we are, we have, what was the thing that people were doing over the last several months? When they couldn't get on a plane, and they couldn't go places, right? They were going to the conservation district sites. So it was part of a, you know, not as, not only are we a destination for, um, businesses and part of the economy, I think part of the economy, but we provided a great mental health outlet.
The fact that people use something doesn't mean they're willing to pay for it.
I think.
That's the problem, I was an assessor at one time, and I had a lady call me up, and she was complaining about her taxes, and I pointed out to her that eighty percent of her taxes at that time went to schools. And she's, I don't care where, no, I don't want to pay this much tax. I could hear kids, you're hearing me in the background while she's on the phone, I said, how many kids do you have? And she says, four, and I said, and how many of them are school agents? She said, all four of them. And I said, you don't want to pay any taxes, you got four kids, go to school, and it's eighty percent of taxes? At that time, my dad was on the school board, and I knew it was costing six thousand dollars per kid to educate a kid, so that's twenty-four thousand dollars her tax bill in her house at that time is four thousand dollars, and she was complaining to me about her taxes. And I said, you're twenty-some thousand dollars to do it every year right now, and you're complaining? And she's, I don't care, I'm not paying this much tax. And, and so, just because somebody's not walking on our trail doesn't mean they want to pay more tax, that just means they want to use it.
No, that's true, but I think that there are people.
Oh, I think there are.
I think that there are.
I, I think the fact is, though, that you know a lot of those people. So, so.
I know both.
You know, so, you know.
You can't live here in that.
Right, but I think you maybe have a higher percentage of people than, I would think you would, maybe, maybe I'm reading too much into this, but, um.
No, I understand what you're saying, I, I completely understand what you're saying.
Depending on what your circle of friends are, you get a different reading, um, on how much people want to pay.
I think that was, it goes back to the survey, I think that's really good, because we did, that was a random sample, uh, representing the demographics, and, you know, taxes did still resonate as an area, right, because it's, you know, my, it's my, well, yes, you know, so it's, you might have my taxes, right, no, you know? But I think, um, the other thing that I think is really, the, the challenge that we have, I think, is communicating not only the facts, and we try different, um, factoids, metrics, how to convey, and, and yet, we're still refining, um, what, what is really important. Everybody wants to have the new shiny, new area improvement, or a new project, or this, this thing, what are you doing new? And, and we're at a place that we can't do more new, we're doing the best we can to take care of, help with that, you know? Um, so I don't, how do we convey, you know, I mean, obviously, what we've been doing is when we look at our projects, we hear some replacements, yes, we highlight that, we give it some, some highlights and, and showcase it, so, you know, it communicates well. But it doesn't take care of the, the core, right, and what's necessary. How do we do that?
So what do you, are we trying to get to some conclusion tonight, or are we trying to get to some conclusion like Tuesday night, or what, what, what day, what's the drop dead day that we're trying to say, this is the area we want to go down, or do we want to go down a couple of them, and say, this is what this is gonna look like if we do this one, this will look like if we do this? You know, versus one, versus two, versus three, where, where, where are we trying to get to?
Right, obviously, this is a lot of information, the discussion is good, I guess I would like to know on the very high level of certain changes, like with where our focus and priorities, because when we come back to one of these scenarios, and we have to start, you know, cleaning trees, so to speak, and, and the branches, uh, to make us work into those areas, um, what are you knowing? Why is it that you're willing to give up? Where is that, where is the profit? Um, because that determines what goes to the values of what we believe we should be doing, and then the other piece is, um, how do we communicate? We have a suggestion, that's, uh, do we sit down, um, understanding when's the right time?
Elizabeth, all three of these scenarios require full PTAL.
I know, they, well, they don't, one's a new development, the other is just from nineteen, one's going backwards.
Scenario three, just new development.
Just new development, all of this.
I think a conversation, it's, no, if we need to get into more tangible or what the specifics, until you pick a scenario, it's difficult for us to start going down that trail, because it just takes time, so once you determine your course, I think at a very high level, those are the areas that we may have to start assembling the dollar savings to make that work, right? The only change would be is your willingness to go deeper into your reserves or camp to help adjust and to allow us to continue on our pathway, we're doing, we're no role, but, you know, taking care of business the most conservative way that we've been doing, that allows us to.
Well, then I have a question in number three, it says levy increase only by new development, but under twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, it says do full PTAL levy. I don't understand that.
And the subsequent, subsequent years, this, this year.
Oh, I see, that's okay.
So the next two years.
That's it, okay.
And then we've been projecting that, every year, we've done this for the last decade, we show, we're gonna take it, and then we don't take it, and we, you know, so it's, it's, but how can you, there's too many variables to really make, Michael's mobile is all we've gotten to.
Well, we always think that, I always think that, I'm sure a question to speak from previous was, was we, I would think that most people can love a year from now, things are gonna be better, and then we get a year like this, and everything is, yeah, I haven't heard anybody say, wow, the twenty twenties has been wonderful.
Well, I, um, I'm, you know, I, I tend to get impatient after a time. So, yeah, this has been very helpful to me, it's very difficult, I'm gonna say that from my perspective this evening, um, I, I would go for three. Tighten our belt, I think the COVID thing is not fully understood, it's gonna continue to have a big impact on everything we do this year. I, I think that, um, I think it's gonna have a very big political impact. So, as Dave pointed out, if we take three, we're commit, we're telling the county that we're gonna tighten our belt, but our expectation is that next year and the following year, we're gonna take our levy. The need, that cannot be criticized, um, or, I don't, there are criticisms that could be directed at it, it seems to be very shallow criticism. So, if you need, you need a sense of where one trustee is, that's where I am. And, you know, everyone can sleep on it, and, uh, both are conscious, and it'll be the same.
All right, I'm gonna throw something out, basically, okay? All right, so, actually, just as a point, not a point of order, but, um, we did try to tell them that we can't do that again, so, right, so that would be this year, and we're still sitting here worried about doing that again, which is.
A good point, but I don't think the COVID thing was, was, um.
No, but again, you can't, but a business can't operate at some point where they just don't capture their, their costs.
There's a lot of businesses that aren't on that.
Well, no, and that's true, that's true.
Something we have to realize is the fact that we're gonna see a very high percentage of restaurants, a lot of businesses, very high, uh, all kinds of businesses go off, so they ask for more money at this point in time.
Exactly, so can, I wanted to just finish a question, that's fine. Um, so, and I know we've talked extensively about this, and I'm not trying to change anything, I think we were on a good path, but getting back to kitchen, all right?
Of course.
So with the idea that we're going to, having the debt certificates take us out, so if we don't take, um, the levy this year, but we do, you know, but we're, we're doing the debt certificate, but in, what was it, twenty-six, we're gonna pay the entire thing off in twenty-seven, so one year, one year payout. That's gonna, if that's the case, and we don't take our levy, and we have all these capital improvements, the thing I'm worried about most is how much pressure's been put on, we can tighten our belt on so far, and we might start to lose our capacity to recover. So my thought being, instead of, would we keep all that, would the trustees be open to, and it's not, extending that is not what I'm looking for, but given the situation, would we want to maybe extend that out beyond the year, so that gives us some relief?
I would let Andy answer that, but that, the debt certificates go for five years. Then our, um, general obligation bonds are paid off, and then, I believe Andy's gonna issue one year for general obligation bond to cover the two point four. So, in effect, none of the principal on that two point four is gonna come out of reserves or the operating fund. It's, we're treading water on that, and then it's gonna basically hit the taxpayer with a, under the bonding authority, so that the, um, I mean.
So rather than a sixty percent decrease, we pay off our debt, we have a fifty percent.
Yes, and it'll go down stepwise, you'll see a, a very big increase, and then a littler increase after that one-year payment.
Two hundred and some thousand dollars aside, the interest from now and then, so really, that has nothing to do with anything we do.
I mean, I don't, I don't wanna speak for Andy, but I'm trying to explain my understanding of it, is that, uh, none of the pension, um, we've sort of taken that out of, uh, operating issues, it doesn't hang over us anymore.
Andy, you wanna say something?
Just everything Bill said was right on. The only impact of the general fund is the one point, almost five million that, you know, we're paying down, but outside of that, there is no more impact. O- other than there may be, you know, we'll, we'll cover the interest between now and, um, twenty-six, but that's probably less than two hundred thousand dollars. Most of that's already provided for, I think, within the debt service fund, we won't know that for sure until we do the deal, so.
It'll be within a few thousand dollars. I think, I think we need to, the whole, think about this a bit longer, um, obviously, scenario three is the one that would be the most easiest to pick at the county board, even with that, and we have to, we have to figure out if we can operate that way, and if we're willing to operate. If we're willing to operate that way, or if we want, before then, try to stop. Yeah, I think we need to go through the budget, somewhere the budget and say, okay, what, what can we get off? What can we do with scenario three? What can't we do? And then see if we want to sell that or not. So that's, that's where, you know, it's, all of it, what's, what is scenario three? What's where we can get, how much stuff is it we're gonna have, what we can do? And then, but I, I think also with the staff revision, totally honest with this, this is, this is the field we have growing with the top wood trees have been this big, and we're gonna be this big in five years. We need to know what we're neglecting.
Well, I hate to move on to a subject that I still have the agenda to get conducted, but there's one thing here under this strategic plan is develop an annual report on deferred maintenance. Isn't that what you were just talking about, reverting it? That needs to be, right, is that what that means?
And we're tracking everything that was following that line because it's happening.
But again, looking back at number three, so we have reserves, three thirty, one twenty-three, of only a sixteen point seven, unassigned reserves of sixteen point seven, that's under the twenty-five. So we better get a levy. If you choose the three, that's, number eleven only maybe a couple hundred thou.
You're not gonna go, what, two thousand point three?
Yeah, I think it's just, you need time to kind of go back from this and think about it as far as, you know, what does it mean into the more specifics? If we were heading down that way, it still is going into a prioritization of what, you know, is it? And again, from the staff direction, we go back and we already give a directive to say, okay, while already going to different departments, and we will say, okay, go back and reduce your area by X percent. We're down to, you know, those are very difficult, those are very difficult places. So like, there's a difference unless you are looking to use reserves to balance some of that. Again, most of it, whether it be staffing or other, it just, it all has a vicious cycle. So no doubt, these are hard decisions, but there's not an easy, we've done all the easy given. That's been done, I presume, but the, the easy stuff's fine.
We're definitely at a point where it's, I mean, if we do two, if we don't, you know, levy is that, the people expense cannot take, become the entire percentage of our budget needs. So at that point, we're saying, we're saying that we'd have to be less people. You'd almost have to say, we're gonna do away with this, whatever, whatever it be. We're not gonna do this any longer, and people that do that, not gonna be working. Because we can't, we can't get to eighty some percent of our budget.
So we're a service agency, how do you manage?
You're not totally a service agency. You're, you've got, you've got twenty some thousand acres you've gotta take care of.
Right.
With people, but it's people that buys it.
And that's similar to, I mean, Andy had done the.
I'm just saying, that's where you're going to be is at some point in time, you will make.
If we pick the number three.
Yeah, at some point in time, we will be saying that, oh, there's certain things we will.
Right, right, we'll always start thinking one of those things that you end up not doing. And then, you know, the voters will say, well, whether they agree with those decisions or not, right? And that, that ultimately, sometimes the results of an action won't happen till there's an action.
Oh, sure.
And so, and then they not seen, so obviously, we're trying to be proactive based on the feedback, but we don't know. So it's what is your core?
Well, you're gonna, no matter what you pick, do away with. I mean, the, the site that Lynn talked about, when we closed down the Lirkind, there might have been only five people that would use that site, I don't know. If there were five people that lived right alongside it, they're gonna be the ones that are not gonna be happy if that site is closed because they live right next to it. The person that uses it is not gonna be happy. So you start, you start picking and choosing as to where's the, where's the least impact. So we, we have to, we have to go into it knowing that that, that may be our job at some point in time.
But it is a, it's a philosophical, you know, conversation with service. There's, there's what we've been providing has been to our mission to educate, to take care of the way and provide services, and the voters, and they voted for the record that they voted to have, you know, the land protected. They voted, they accepted restoration, they voted to make all these public access improvements. And we did, and they asked us.
Well, I think we really, we have a little more agenda to keep, and I don't, I think we had a good discussion, but I think we need to move on with the CD and, so, if I may, we'll move on to this, this other points. Job classification review, four point three A, the reclassification restoration ecologists, plant ecologists, and wildlife ecologists, grade nineteen to twenty, on a technical professional salary scale.
Right, and Andy can unmute, mine will start here. So we read the summary, and again, I wonder, there was so much to read for these several meetings. So I appreciate everybody's patience.
I want to compliment Penny for the work she did on that comparison, oh, we, a mole.
Yeah, it was.
That was incredible.
Yeah.
Thanks, Ed.
He did a, he did a great job. When it came about, at the same time, back in July, you know, last year, we had done, we had completed the study that Gov HR did, actually, when they were officially doing the study, their methodology, which we had in there, was actually the first time where they had some really good science we do become, of the ability to pay in the agencies which they looked at. And so I know it's been discussed on, you know, how did they select the different park districts? You know, the work that we do, and we're in the business of forest reserves and classification districts, but the size that we are very different. If we go out to the West, there's not many agencies or districts that are even comparable to an organization or size. So when they do through that, they select. The ecologist position, the plant ecologist, they right away with the study felt there was an anomaly, and they did, they disagreed with their placement. That gave at the same time that we didn't do an internal equity study, because we were opposing to do that. That would adjust, because now every position in your organization, you offer half its spend mark. You're only in bands of the groups of the jobs that are in those classifications. You might select one of that and one out of another band. And so with the ecologists, they would not compare to the park districts. They would compare with forest preserve districts, Lake, DuPage, and King County. So that one, one input represented about thirty three percent of the, the score of where they ended up being. Lake County, what was brought to our attention, but what Ed did is Lake County had, they have a different setup there. They've got a, a level one and a level two. Our team, Ed, and you can speak to that, are more of a hybrid versus the level one. And so when your, when your report is sent out to the agencies, they fill out, in the job description, they fill it out. It's in the back, they have giant analysis. So they made the case that it was a level closer to a level two. We took it to say, well, it's not really a level two, level one, probably a hybrid somewhere. So then we refactored after the COVID and getting inputs and to follow up and stuff from the team. Whether that, and we knew that and graded it, and we made it accordingly. It actually graded, when we put that in, it graded to the level twenty-one. That twenty-one, though, then is on a, again, is not perfect because it's a hybrid. So we're using that data points. But we have other positions to where it's not on par with. So without the internal equity study, it, we jumped it from HR and administration to a grade twenty. So it would go up one, the retroactivity is to be on par because that's when the changes and adjustments to all the positions that did get modified to the study were. So this is just to put an imperative in that. And so what you have in front of you is those recommendations to adjust those eight positions, take it retro to April first of twenty nineteen. And Ed was identifying funding within the operational budget. So that's completely only a bit of item two, to make those transfers. When we made adjustments to other areas, in the past with the study, it did come specifically out of the department budget. In this case, it is coming out of the department budget, but that is just to get us up to where, that was this, where we are today. And anything else to add?
I apologize, it's hard, it's, sometimes it's kind of hard to hear, so I don't want to, I don't want to repeat anything you may have said, Elizabeth, but I think there's a couple of important things. I'm not going, I'm not gonna go through the documentation. You have it in front of you. And what I would like to talk to a little bit, though, is kind of go over the who, when, the where, and, and the how much, since everything is driven by, by our finances. And just kind of frame some of the conversation. Again, I apologize if Elizabeth's already gone through this, but it's kind of tough to hear. Please understand that the recommendation covers eight employees. And when we think of our restoration ecologists, there are six of those. And those ecologists are responsible for the hands-on management of tens of thousands of acres that the district owns and that we hold and trust for the people of the county. The other two are responsible for hundreds of species of wildlife and thousands of species of plants. But all eight are grouped in the very same salary range. So together, they make up eighty percent of our available full-time workforce to care for these resources. And I just want to say going into this, that these individuals are nationally, regionally, and even internationally recognized for their expertise on natural resource issues. And many of them have been with the, the district for decades. And I guess simply put, you could strain eight thousand and not come up with more, eight more dedicated professionals. I do want to reiterate that they first expressed their concerns over where the placement of the salary ranges were at on March eleventh, actually before the board approved the Gov HR study. And they continued to use the, our established human resource system all through two thousand and nineteen while they conducted their research and they prepared documentation on that research, requesting that those ranges be, be adjusted. And they, through the whole process, you know, agencies like the conservation district have all kinds of time constraints, and things come up all the time. So they worked through the third conservation congress, two burn seasons, constructing the mitigation bank, and now a global pandemic, to try to get this placed before the board and to get the research right and to have it all vetted. And I just want to say they've done this with, with a patience and a gracefulness that is really a hallmark of their employment here. And that's important because it explains why the recommendation includes retroactivity to two thousand, to the two thousand nineteen approval of the salary ranges. That is because their concern was brought up at the very beginning of this, not later on in the process. I think Elizabeth talked a little bit about the comparisons. I was asked to do that review in November of two thousand nineteen, and it was, it was pretty thorough. And I, and I do think she mentioned that the fourteen park districts that were part of the comparable agencies did not have the same job description, and in fact, none of them were able to supply that for our positions. So the three forest preserves actually were identified as the only comparables for, for those jobs. And the wildlife and plant ecologist positions were not evaluated. The, the study didn't evaluate every position. But had the selection been for those two, instead of the restoration ecologist, they most likely would have come in at a, at a higher salary range because that's the nature of those kinds of jobs. And you have to understand that all of them are classified in the same salary range. So it's important to realize that when you have only three comparables, accuracy in each one is very important because each one represents over a third of the actual data that you're able to compare. The job that was used for Lake County Forest Preserves, comparison out of Restoration Ecology, Ecologist One, it really doesn't reflect the duties that are carried out by our Restoration Ecologist, the plant, or the Wildlife Ecologist. And it's really more aptly suited to more of an entry-level position that's similar to our existing habitat tax. So the Restoration Ecologist Two position for Lake County more accurately reflects a lot of what they do. And they are a hybrid of one and two, but there's an awful lot of that, that Restoration Ecologist Two position that is part of their, their daily job duties. And I, and I hope, hopefully, as you go through the material, you'll see the methodology I tried to use to be as accurate as possible to compare those jobs. And then I'll close with how much. The funds that are needed to cover the proposal, both retroactivity portion and that part of the current fiscal year that we're in now, is able to be covered in-house by the Land Preservation Division. And this is because we have limitations that have been imposed on our work plan with COVID nineteen. We've lost seasonal staff. We've curtailed our volunteer activities. We have a hiring freeze on any new LPNR habitat tax. And so we are not going to use the materials and the herbicide that we would typically use in a given year. We had one large conference that we were able to send someone to for the first time in five years, the GIS conference, that has been canceled and moved online. So we're, we're saving a significant amount of money that would have, would have costed to send somebody to California for that. So we can carry those costs in-house. They will need to be added to the regular operational budget going forward next year. But in a sense, this is really no different kind of situation than it would have been if the ranges had been accurate in that original HR Gov study. They would already have been incorporated into those changes when the board approved those. So that's sort of a, a little bit of add-on to what Elizabeth said, and certainly I will try to answer.
I have a question on the agenda for next Tuesday. There's an agenda item to move funds to get the twelve eight that we need. Is that all then from your department, transferring from, within your department?
Yes, it's all from Land Preservation and Natural Resources. So it will not, it will not, it will not hit the operations of other divisions.
Thank you.
Ed, this question is probably my misunderstanding. Is the sixteen month retroactive cost, which was twelve thousand eight hundred and forty-nine, does that cover all eight employees, or is that per employee?
No, that covers all eight.
Thank you. That makes it easier.
It does.
Anyway, also any other questions? Thank you, Ed.
Thank you for your patience, and I know it's been a long night.
There's a lot of those that have us. All right, let's go to four, four point three B.
That one is, is pretty simple. So we go under a review of exempt and non-exempt positions. There's criteria that we have to go through to evaluate whether eligible for overtime or not. This request came from, and before, that our community relations specialist should be reevaluated. She is a creative, does our landscapes, does a lot of, you know, autonomy in the work that she does. And so I did have our HR department hire fifty back. And finally, she's going through where she would be considered exempt. So in this classification, it doesn't change your grace status, doesn't change your salary.
She just doesn't get overtime.
But she doesn't get overtime. So she's working, she can continue to do work, and then she flexes time, and so it just puts her in. And that's our recommendation.
I couldn't, what was the F, F L, I wrote it down.
Fairly standard.
Thank you.
That's our recommendation is to.
So she would work, I mean, some hours before now, you did a lot of overtime.
Well, she would, she would work to do tasks. And so if she's working on landscapes, budget, or brochure, or things that need to get out the door, she may have been accumulating overtime, because she's a deadline, it has to get done. So this allows more flexibility. She can stay on task through the project that needs to done, do flex on other areas. She's a creative, though, so it, it kind of. She's a creative, though, so it kind of fit into, when we initially went through them years ago, they were looking at positions, and it was a very, wanted to err on the side, be very conservative. So if they're on the edge, you move them into the non-exempt category, because you didn't want a claim that was going to come back to you at a later date, saying you classified them incorrectly, I was due to have all this time. Under the provisions, and we went back and examined it very thoroughly, based on this position due to criteria, we're very comfortable that we can move and not have any potential issues.
And she's happy with it.
And she can be.
A little voting on that on Tuesday night.
That's Tuesday.
Or is there anything else? Just one thing, what is this and how do I read it?
Which one is that one?
That's all of the projects.
Okay.
This is some sort of risk assessment, I don't, I, let's, so if I put the red and the orange and the.
All right, no, this is a great question. So back in May, when we did our COVID agenda plan, we did the budget with the reforecasting, and then as a part of that, we gave you a risk assessment of how we were tracking, which.
COVID.
How we were dealing with COVID, with, with not hiring seasonals, not bringing purchases on, waiting to delay that, and, and how we were doing. So if you look to the far right, there is a status, we had where we, so we thought it was going to impact us, what we did. And then we had what we were going to do to realign ourselves, and then we added two columns to the right, which is a status update, and no. So it says, it's either we're on the, on trail, off trail, on target, or we got this. That was kind of our way to, to look at that. So if, if we're off trail, that means we already were aligning, that we were going to have things a little bit differently, it was going to be a delay. But this means we're, we're further off than where we hoped that we were going to be with the realignment. If we're on target, means it's not businesses as, as normal business is able, but we're tracking where we expected to be. And if we said we got this, that means that we are doing better than we thought we would.
Now I know how to read it.
Now you know how to read that whole thing, so, thanks for asking. So mostly, if you look at the red, green, yellow, you don't see too many reds, which is a good thing. Yellow is where we expected to be, and if you see green, well, that means.
Okay, anything else?
You know, the other thing I have done, thinking, is that Thursday night, not only did we have the review of the full meeting, but the strategic plan. And so I did send out, you have the long, another chart that has a long version. And then on Saturday, I sent you out more of a word short, easy to read version, so depending on how you like to look at things.
And this is the shorter, easy to read version.
This is the shorter, easier to read version. You'll see under all of the numbers of where the plan that you approved, you have all the tactics. So please look at that, and as the discussions that we had tonight with budget, you know, our goal was to design this with where there wouldn't need to be a lot of additional dollars expended above and beyond what we were already using, and help staff on board to be able to move these things. So that's, that's the lens in which we use, we look forward to your feedback.
Well, if there's nothing else, Lynn would like to make a motion and second it, herself.
Oh.
I have, the only one I can do when he's. You're it.
I'm it, I, I move to, I'm turned.
Would you like to second that, too? I'll second that.
Okay.
I think those are well company themes.
Okay, we have to take a roll call. So trustee Campbell.
Yes.
And trustee Henning.
Get them all for it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, tread carefully.
You'll do.
I'll leave your left here, obviously, I touched them many times.
I will sanitize them.
Thank you.
They're shared.
Every office needs a several sets of those.
I wish the doctor's offices, we have them sitting at the front desk.
Loses hers and then finds hers, why have a drawer?
Oh, yeah, sometimes I go down to zero.
I have a dozen, yeah.